Do you want to take this? And do this? Now, then join me, Terrence Irving, Parish Program Coordinator for the Great Ascension Trash Bash, held on March 26 through the 31st. There will be a Trash Bash Award Ceremony on Saturday, the 31st, at 11:00 a.m. at the Ascension Chamber of Commerce in Gonzales. There'll be food, prizes, and fun for the whole family. Bring the kids, bring your family, bring your friends, but most of all, bring your love for this parish. That's the Great Ascension Parish Trash Bash. Let's clean it up together.
This time, I'd like to call to order the March 14, 2007 Planning Commission Meeting. Let the record show that all Commissioners are present. Before we get started, I'd like to make a couple of announcements. We have a couple of agenda items that have been pulled, and we will not be discussing these items this evening. Item 6A, Parker Place Estates is up for preliminary approval. That item has been pulled from our agenda. Also, the Dutch Town Gardens Spud has been pulled. We will not be discussing that development this evening as well. Moving along, item 3, acceptance of the minutes of the February 14, 2007 meeting.
There's a change I want to make on item 10, 10A, I believe it is, under Old Business, Wesley Place. The large paragraph that starts off should be Ms. Peggy Myers, but it's a large paragraph on the second page. LDQ is referred to incorrectly. It should be U.S. Corps of Engineers. It also says a Section 401 permit. It should be a Section 404 permit from the U.S. Corps of Engineers. And third or fourth sentence from the bottom, again, it says LDQ states that the more than 30 days have passed, it should be U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. LDQ does not issue a wetlands permit, Corps of Engineers says.
Angie, you got all that?
Yes.
Other than that, I make a motion to accept.
The amended minutes.
The amended minutes, per Mr. Courtwright.
I have a motion to accept the amended minutes by Scott Courtwright, seconded by Don Grant. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 4, public comment period. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you will get your three minutes to speak.
I sent an email out to you voicing our disappointment on the motion to give preliminary approval to Wesley Place. We, some of the neighbors and I that have voiced their displeasure up here and their comments to the commission, we're trying not to give up on this because we feel so strongly that this is not the type of subdivision development that needs to be here in Ascension Parish at this point and stage in the game. And, you know, we just, we just feel like despite all the, the engineering review and the Bill Ruhl statement to, in a letter to you, we just, we just feel that there's still too much uncertainty on that. And, you know, we just felt that the motion was very vague. We, you know, how do you measure worsen? If worsen occurs and the construction is there and done and it's too late, you know, we, we have water in our homes. You know, we feel like the, the statement in September by Mr. Sanji about functionality of engineering doesn't always work in, in reality. And again, you've heard me say this before, we all know that. And, you know, that's what scares us the most in this indisputable flooding, flooding area. And, you know, we just wanted to make another comment, and we want to keep it in your, in your minds. I, I don't know of any appeal process by the public to this, to this commission. I know that the, the developers have unlimited appeals. In this case, all he did on this one was divide the west retention pond in half and called the front part of it, or the south part of the west retention pond, the off-site storage. And that, that was it. That was the only change. The dimensions all remain the same of the entire detention pond area. I'd just like to ask the question, and maybe Mr. Parington knows the answer to this, is there an appeal process by the, by the public?
It would have to be to follow suit and get an injunction.
Follow suit and get an injunction, okay. Well, you know, it, it may come to that for us. We, we are looking into that, so.
30 seconds, sir.
We just feel that, that in this area, this, this subdivision does not need to be built and at the, at the risk of flooding out, the homeowners already in a flood-prone area. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm waiting to see if there was anyone else that signed up. That was it?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move along. We'll go to item 5 on our agenda, public hearing granting approval to the following family partitions. 5A, M. Gale, El Goto property lots, K-1 and K-2. Mr. Quintmaw.
Good evening. Clint Quintmaw, representing W.J. Quintmaw Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the family partition of lot K into K1 and K2. There were no comments from the review agency, although there was a, a discussion to know the exact meaning of a 50-foot general servitude, what that actually meant. Back in June of 2003, the west lot J was subdivided, and at that time, the planning commission requested us to use that term in order to include sewage into that definition. And so, with the request of the planning department, we put a note on the plat stating general servitudes are to be used for utilities, drainage, and sewage disposal, and are not intended to be a private servitude of passage for ingress and egress. Other than that, there were no other comments.
Comments or questions from Commissioners? There are no comments or questions from Commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. Okay, no one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from Commissioners?
Charles, on the general servitude, all of the uses that he mentioned would fall on the utility, correct?
Well, because of the addition of the sewer disposal, that's why he's putting it under the general servitude.
And typically, that wouldn't fall in the utility?
Well, as I recall, not for the affluent ditch, no.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Paige Becknell. Seconded by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 5B, Ulysses Diaz Track Lots D-2-A, D-2-B, D-2-C.
Good evening. My name is Carl Johnson with Baton Rouge Land Surveying. My address is 11931 Industrial Flex Boulevard, Suite 300 in Baton Rouge. I'm here representing my client, Miss Dana LeBlanc. She would like to do a family partition and divide her tract that's on Babin Road into four lots for herself, her daughter, and her father. We had submitted a plat to the planning commission a while back, and they had a few minor drafting comments. I have a letter back from Mr. Becknell's office telling you all that we had addressed all the comments, and we would respectfully ask for your approval. My client is here also. If you have any technical questions, I'd be glad to answer those, and other general questions, Miss LeBlanc would be glad to answer those also.
Any comments or questions from Commissioners?
There was a comment from staff about the removal of treated sewer effluent from the back two lots. Was that comment addressed?
I have never received anything from the planning commission or the Engineering Review Agency on that. But I believe I know this typical statement you're talking about. We'd be glad to add that, but we have not been provided anything on that.
This is actually from the utility company, isn't it?
Yeah, it's from DHH.
They wanted some additional verbiage on the plat stating the route for the sewage effluent. We have no problem with it. I'm familiar with the, somewhat of a new procedure they want to go with, but we just haven't been supplied with the language. I'm sure whatever they supply, we would be glad to add it to the plat.
Charles, is that all it is? It's just wording that they're wanting? Okay.
One more question, Charles, pertaining to this, this, this plat's a little different. The only reason that this is a utility servitude versus a general servitude is the fact that the effluent will not be running through that servitude?
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve because it meets the requirements.
I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon.
Does that include the note? Does anything have to be?
You said you'd already added that, right?
No, ma'am, I haven't been provided with the language. I knew something like that was coming down the pipeline, but we haven't been provided the exact language. We certainly agree to that.
The intention of that verbiage being added.
Sure.
I'll second. I have a motion to approve by Sherri Slimon with condition, seconded by Mike Bardwell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, item, well, we only had one preliminary approval, and that's been pulled, so we'll jump from item 6 to item 7. Public hearing for granting final approval to the following subdivision, 7A, Helena Place.
My name is Derek Murphy with Ferris Engineering. We're here tonight to ask for approval on the final plat for Helena Place. The, the final inspection was done earlier this week. There is a couple outstanding punch list items that will be handled tomorrow. Other than that, all comments have been addressed and, and with the ERA and DPW. We respectfully ask for your approval.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Has the benchmarks been set?
Yes.
Okay.
What are you proposing for the access to the sewer treatment plant? What type of road?
It's a limestone, limestone road.
And that's one of the punch list items? Currently, there's no limestone.
Mike, Tom usually puts his own roadie on. Because he does not want it tore up during construction of the subdivision.
How do we ensure that that's done after?
One-year warranty period, we make sure of that.
That's typical.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Okay, then at this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Wait, has the asphalt been laid? Have you done the asphalt?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I've got a list up here. I'm just reading it. It says it wasn't done, so, okay.
It's done. I wrote it out there today.
All right. I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Alan Kraus.
Second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 7B, Old Dutch Town, fourth filing.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, I'm John Fetzer. I represent Old Dutch Town Development, and I am here this evening asking you to approve the final plat for Old Dutch Town, fourth filing. All construction shown on the plans, all improvements shown on the construction plans have been completed. File inspection has been made. Punch list items have been completed, substantially completed, and we are ready to file our plat, and we respectfully request that you approve it.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
In reference to comment number one, Michael, about the building or showing, about the building setback, is that an adequate response?
That was my, my request.
Okay, it is adequate, okay.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? At this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up, speak on this property, please come up, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I move that we approve, pending all final inspections, punch list items being complete, and comments being addressed.
I have a motion to approve by Mike Bardwell with condition.
A second.
Seconded by Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item 7C, Renaissance, first filing.
Ladies, Mr. Chairman, Commission Members, I'm Jim Tatum with Tatum Engineering, here tonight representing All-Star Builders Group on Renaissance subdivision, first filing. As you know, this subdivision is located on Highway 73 between I-10 and Airline Highway. It is a single-family residential subdivision, all curving gutter streets, underground utilities. We'll have a concrete boulevard entrance with entrance features, and we have a community collection system for the sewage and the treatment facility. We've also constructed two stormwater management areas on the site, and we've designed and currently have under construction off-site drainage improvements to the south, which go through Province Point subdivision. We're asking for a conditional approval of our final plat tonight. Number one, meeting the requirements, all of, for the bonding, the completion bonding for the project, also that the off-site drainage improvements are completed, that we address the comments of the Engineering Review Agency, which are very minor, and they'll be taken care of, and, and that we complete all the necessary inspections. I'll be glad to answer any questions or address any comments you may have. Mr. Dennis Carlin with All-Star Builders Group is with me tonight, and also in the audience is Mr. Jim Fletcher, who is a representative for the Province Point subdivision, and I know he may want to make a few comments, so I'll be glad to answer any questions or have Mr. Fletcher speak.
Comments or questions from Commissioners? If there are no comments or questions from Commissioners, we'll go ahead and we'll open up the public hearing.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher?
Yes.
We, we...
He's signing.
He did sign in? Okay.
I believe I had six minutes. Is that correct?
That's news to me. Three.
Thank you.
Had someone else sign in? Excuse me.
First, let me ask you, you are representing the Homeowners Association?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then as such, you can request five minutes.
Thank you.
That's how, that's how we do it.
I would prefer to, I would prefer the five minutes in this case.
You'll have the five minutes then, sir.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening. My name is James Fletcher. I'm the president of the Province Point Homeowners Association, and sometime in November of '05, we found out about Renaissance subdivision, and in January of '06, we stood before this commission and asked that the drainage in Province Point be improved and some things be done, at which the commission granted at that time. And I'm here this evening to report on how things are going. The total footage has not been 100% complete. There are some areas that are, is this work? Okay, if you can, this is a street in front of my house on Lot 14. It was cut by the parish this week in order to make a way for this other work to be done. It's my driveway. You see the cut on the left. You see the pipe laying there to be done. You'll see some completed work here as it goes across the back of several of lots in Province Point subdivision. There's water in that pipe, as you may or may not be able to see, and this is a shot at the very end of that pipe that we were just looking at, and past this point, there's another bit of pipe that needs to be laid in order to match up with existing drainage that's going through Province Point. I understand this work has been under contract to a contractor, it's done a little bit differently than in what the parish would normally do, and as such, the contractor at this point has not been paid for the work that he has been doing, and I do believe that this work will be, in fact, accomplished, and I stand here this evening to say that I have no objections to the work that's been done. As in fact, in talking with several of the people, the contractor has been responsive to the homeowners, and the work has gone in. It is, as I mentioned, not complete, however, it is imminent, and I'd like to state that for the record. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Evan Copeland?
That was my time.
Paul?
My name is Paul LeBlanc. I live at 37, 396 Province Point. I'm Lot 8. It's where the drainage is actually ending, and there, it goes off to the goudine down, down the way, so that's where the catch basin is. And first, I didn't object to, to what they were doing. It's actually helped out some of the drainage problems we had, but when they were doing this, I told them that the way that it flowed off my land was to the street and not down to the goudine. The ditch that we have was only one, one and a half foot deep, where the modads would drain out and just go off and, and run off. Now, instead of that, I have about a five-foot drop-off, and I brought some pictures. I don't know if you, I don't know how to work this little thing. There you go. And that's where it stands right now. Now, they are going to fill in around this area, but even talking to the contractor, all they're going to do is slope it. Now, after this rain, I wish I would have had time to take a digital camera. I've got nothing but erosion, and that's what's going to continue to happen, even after talking to the people doing the work. They said this is going to be a problem. The pipeline is actually two feet off the normal drainage ditch now, so instead of being aligned, here's our regular drainage ditch, where actually, the, the one they put in is two feet off of that. We also have, it's going to have three to six inches of standing water in it, which we didn't have before in my, at my house. We already have a mosquito problem. It's just going to add to it. Now, we never did have, here's another picture, where you can see this huge opening here on this pipe, never had that problem either, and I have kids, dogs, everything else. This becomes a now safety issue that we have, and this is going to stay open, from what I understand, for drainage purposes. So when that goudine backs up, guess where the water's coming back to? My house. And that's going to happen. It happens every time it floods, because they don't turn the pumps on. First thing that happens is that, that backs up, and where's the water coming? Back to me. So this was, never said that this was going to happen, and you can see the difference in the, in the landscaping here, the level of the ditch, and also, here's another picture of, this is how it stands right now. They will fill in right around this area, but they're just going to slope it off, and today, this is nothing but erosion. It's already starting to impact here, where they had to dig out part of my pipe to my, my septic system.
30 seconds, sir.
Down into here. So this is actually going to start eroding off my property and continue to do that, because all they're going to do is slope the land, and that's what the contractor said they were going to do. So now, I have a problem with, I have a garage that sits right on this side of it. What's going to happen to that? I'm going to end up having to take care of this mess, and the drainage does not go off properly. It's got to make its own way and curve off two feet and go down to the drainage pipe that they set in place.
Time.
Good evening. My name's Amy DePlessis, and I live at 37504 Province Point. On Monday afternoon, a gentleman from the parish office came and handed me a letter and told me that I needed to contact someone with Ascension Parish Office pertaining to the removal of my fence. So I called the office, and I was assuming that it was the back fence where they've been doing all the drainage work, and what they told me was that they had no idea, and I needed to call someone else. So later that afternoon, about 10 minutes to 5:00, Monday afternoon, Mr. Allred calls me back, and he says, "Well, Mr. DePlessis, we're not talking about the back fence, we're talking about your side fence." That the servitude, there's evidently a culvert that goes between me and my neighbor's property from this new catch basin that they just put. from this new catch basin that they just put in. He said, "We'll remove the fence, but we won't put it back up." And I asked him, I said, "Well, because the pipe is not adequate now because of the new subdivision and all the drainage, I don't feel I should have to incur the expense of having to reinstall my fence." And then they also told me that they were planning on taking it down Tuesday, with the weather and the rain, they didn't do it, I have three children and two small dogs, and I don't think I was given enough notification that they were going to be opening up my backyard, and also, I don't feel that I should have to incur the expense of having to put the fence back up. So, I'm very uninformed about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Jim, back up.
Yeah, I'll be glad to, were there any other comments that the commission may have that I can address at this point, or I can address Mr. LeBlanc and Ms. DePlessis's comments?
Probably better if you went ahead and addressed those comments.
Well, on Mr. LeBlanc's comments, there was a development today that Mr. Fletcher told me about earlier that I don't think Mr. LeBlanc was aware of, and that is that there's a letter of intent between the parish to allow the homeowners along the northern, or the northern owners, northern lot owners of Province Point subdivision to participate in a project to fill their ditch, to put a pipe in their ditch, and maybe Mr. Fletcher can expound on that, but I just asked him about it, he indicated Mr. LeBlanc was not aware of that. Also, in terms of making some minor adjustments to pipe slopes, that can be done in the field if that's creating a problem, I was unaware of those problems, I had not been contacted by Mr. LeBlanc or the contractor regarding this work. If there's a, on the issue of the goudine backing up, I wish we could stop that, of course, that was a big engineering issue for us in designing the subdivision, but we just, we can't control, and the goudine, and Province Point can't control the goudine, we're just, we're working around it and designing the best system that's available. In terms of a pipe being stubbed out, that pipe was stubbed out before, there was a structure located at the rear of this gentleman's property, and there was a pipe stubbed out, that was part of the original drainage system, and we're not, at this point, we're not changing that. On Ms. DePlessis, the issue of the, of her fence, unfortunately, from time to time, homeowners build fences in servitudes, and when you build a fence in a drainage servitude, you always run the risk of the parish or the city coming behind you and needing to make some repairs or perform maintenance in that servitude, and when you've chosen to build a fence in a servitude, the risk that you run is that the fence will be taken down. So, it's unfortunate, I'm sorry, that's her situation.
Comments or questions from commissioners? Sir, I'm sorry, the public comment period is over with. Sir, the public comment period is over with. Comments, questions from commissioners?
O'Neil, are you involved in sending out the notices for that? For the fences being in a drainage servitude? Are you involved in that, or that's not?
They send out written notice, they do it inside, they do it in-house, and if you have your fence in a servitude, that is a risk.
Is there a timeframe that, when a notice like that should go out? To allow them to know?
Not really, because you've got your fence in a servitude. I mean, when you put the fence in a servitude, the drainage, I don't know what the, how they do it over there, but I mean, when the fence is in a servitude, you're in a servitude, that's the problem.
Well, there's quite a few fences in that servitude, I drove down and looked down the line, and they were all over on it. I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On Mr. LeBlanc, well, wherever, wherever you end, you're going to have a change in elevation, but that's something, if you had to, you could lay sod to prevent the erosion, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
I mean, I understand there is another deal that could be available, but worst case, you could lay sod.
That's correct, and of course, during construction, the potential for erosion and washouts is always there, and the exact terms of the contract that were executed between the contractor and the parish for this particular work, I'm not aware of those terms firsthand, but most modern contracts, most recent contracts have a provision in them for erosion control. So, silt fencing, hay bales, sandbags, there are several different methods that can be used to help prevent the erosion.
Are any of those BMPs in place right now, today?
I'm not aware if there are or not.
I guess my bigger concern is, and you see it all throughout the parish, but in other states, of course, this is what I do for a living, but in other states, we have, you know, there's a big BMP push and turbidity in streams and that sort of thing, not only in respect to a particular homeowner, but in respect to the complete watershed, what are the, what's the turbidity doing to the watershed? And so what I look at is, how can we do, how can we put these BMPs in place today while the construction's going on? I agree with you 1,000%, erosion's going to happen certainly when we get a rainfall like we did today and yesterday, but I surely would like to see the parish start looking at putting up BMPs right now that work, that are proven while construction's going on, and put it more of a preventative measure as opposed to an afterthought. So, he may be concerned about his particular erosion around his garage, I think he mentioned his garage is right there, his driveway, or whatever structure's there, but perhaps you can appease him a bit by putting out some BMPs, certainly with his garage being there, sod's probably not going to be adequate enough to prevent that, but, you know, like Ms. Slimon said, there are other measures that you can take, so that may help him out, may help you out.
And we'll be glad.
Good neighbor situation.
We'll be glad to do that, and I think the folks that I'm working with that are developing this property are good citizens, are good neighbors, and if we need to make a trip out there and to specifically look at Mr. LeBlanc's issues, we'll do that.
But that will be the end of the pipe, is that the stub, right there?
At this point, yes, it is.
I mean, not given this, this, we just learned about with addition of putting new piping, it may extend it, but as it stands today, that's the end?
That's correct, and if, if all of the neighbors, this is a great opportunity for the neighbors to get together, and I think the parish's commitment here, as I understand it, is that if the homeowners will purchase the pipe, the parish will install it. So, it's a, it's a good situation, it's an opportunity. You see, when Province Point was developed, there wasn't, there was, there wasn't a requirement for community sewage collection and treatment for those sized lots, and so each of those lots has a packaged treatment plant that discharge into the ditch along the northern boundaries of the subdivision, and if the, if the neighbors get together and choose to pipe it, then there'll be an opportunity to close these ditches in, it'll provide, it'll make for easier maintenance, it'll provide for better drainage, and it'll allow that treatment plant effluent to go into the collection system, and it won't be exposed, it won't be an open ditch, so hopefully, the homeowners choose to take advantage of this.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Are you designing a full drainage system all the way to the goudine? I mean, where does your actual contractual obligation start?
Well, we designed the internal system for Renaissance subdivision, and we designed the discharge lines that drain the two, storm the two ponds that go to the goudine. I think where Mr. LeBlanc is located, he's right on the fringe, he's right on the edge. I think his neighbor to the west is fully piped as a part of this system.
Go to this, back to this good neighbor thing, work with the parish, let's not leave a disconnect between, I mean, if your flow line is two or three feet below the natural ditch, I mean, you're not creating a good situation, I mean, it's just going to.
And that can be corrected, the slope on the pipe can be adjusted and raised and.
You know, along with the erosion control issue, if you can improve the flow line another couple hundred feet, and Mike, are you looking, or are y'all reviewing the whole drainage conceptual plan, or?
Yeah, we reviewed the construction plan details, yes.
Just, I mean, in conjunction with the goudine, or? I want to make sure there's not a gap.
No, they're all of it, all of it, the drainage models and design actually started from the goudine and worked all the way back to the northernmost tip of the Renaissance subdivision, so.
But that's conceptual, not as-built, in other words?
No, no, that's construction.
Have you been out in the field to see that there is a two-foot?
We haven't had a final inspection yet, no.
Well, that's, we're going to make this bonded thing. And in conjunction with a good neighbor, let's not tear somebody's fence down if they have kids, let's, you know, make provisions to have something backup in place, work with them, I know it's maybe not you, maybe more of the parish, but let's not create a safety hazard for children, let's work with the homeowners in that respect, too. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions, commissioners?
On that same line, I just want to make sure I understand, this intergovernmental agreement that's been mentioned tonight, that's between the parish and the homeowners, correct?
That would be correct.
So that's outside of the scope of this?
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
I would just like to say that I appreciate all the work that you guys have done to work with the neighbors and the neighborhood, and I know that with Mr. LeBlanc, I know if you guys would just meet with him, you guys will work it out, and I really appreciate all of the information you've kept us up on, and I feel like you've gone the extra mile, and the group out there working is doing a great job.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? What's the wish of the commission?
I move to approve subject to having the off-site drainage improvements completed prior to the plat being signed by the chairman. And all the punctual items and improvements completed.
I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas.
I'll second that.
Second by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Thank you. Item 8, public hearing to consider the following simple division of property with a variance. It a David H. Wilcox property lots 1A, 1B, 1C, 2A, and 2B.
Ellen Jackson with McLean and Associates, asking for this simple division, will the waiver be approved? There weren't any comments? And we're asking for your approval.
Comments or questions from commissioners? There are no comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and speak on this property, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission? I have a motion to approve by Don Grant.
A second.
Second by Sherri Slimon. Is there any opposition or discuss, oh, I'm sorry, Paige Becknell? By Paige Becknell. Is there any opposition or discussion? Somebody else, has someone got a cellphone on?
Change your motion.
Motion passes. Okay, hopefully, everybody will believe now that you need to turn your cellphones off, because it does interfere with the audio.
Run, Ellen, run.
Item 9, committee reports. Subdivision ordinance committee has been working on several items, and we will have a, our next subcommittee meeting will be this Friday at noon. We do have one recommendation for the commission, and it is some adoption of a policy, it's a little tricky because this is an alternate, but it's an adoption, we're going to adopt it as policy. So... I'm going to go ahead and let someone else explain this. In fact, I'll go ahead and let O'Neil kind of get it, get into it.
Okay, the ordinance says one thing, but we're not really amending the ordinance because it's, what you're going to do is allow an alternate, which is just flipping them the other way, you're just authorizing the engineer review agent to allow it the other way. I don't think that requires a change in the whole ordinance, because you're not, there's still, all the same utilities are going to be there, I just don't think you need it, it's, you're allowing an alternate to do it.
And I think also, we've got a situation where it's not going to necessarily happen all the time.
Right.
So.
It's just, it's just going to allow an alternate.
Where it does.
It will happen all the time.
It will happen all the time.
Yes, sir, we're looking at the water and gas two trade places from now on.
Okay.
I'm Margie Swanson with Ascension Water, and with this adoption, the way that it is, every time that a service line is installed to a customer's home, we have to get the gas company out there because we have to dig open and we run a risk of cutting their line when we put in the meter in the meter box. So what we asked the gas company if they would object to us trading places with them, and they gave us no objection, and I have a letter signed from them also. So, we're coming to you to ask for that to please be put in place.
And was it also not just the meters, but it was also the fire hydrants you guys were having to cross over?
Correct.
I just wanted you to make that clear, too.
Correct, thank you.
Can you submit the letter to staff after they have a copy of that, just for their records? Thank you.
The question I've got, being, they wanted to have it, this wouldn't really be an alternative anymore, wouldn't we just re-revise this drawing and give it a new revision number?
I suggest we have an alternative because there are all some that are already there one way.
Right, but as of the date of this, that this would pass, this would be the second revision, and any new construction would have to follow this, correct?
Correct.
I don't have a problem with that, if that's what y'all want to do.
I just, I want to make sure it doesn't become confusing, because if they're saying that there is no alternate and both companies have agreed, you know, let's just revise this drawing from this day, you know, from the time it's adopted forward.
If we make it a revision, O'Neil, we don't have to make it an ordinance, do we? We can still adopt it as policy?
You're not amending the ordinance because it's.
I understand.
The ordinance reads one way, all you can do is, is, um, change the drawing that you're attaching to it, because it's not really, it's not a mandatory which way you do it, that was just the way the ordinance, that's the way it was, but we can change the other way.
We can put a note on a revised drawing saying that the two were reversed prior to this date.
Right, right, and I don't think that's a problem, it could be done as a policy. I looked at this, because the wording of the language doesn't say who goes where, would you say, "Look at the attached."
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
Need a motion to move it to public hearing?
Not to move it, I can just open up the public hearing, maybe the motion.
Is it advertised?
It wasn't really advertised.
Can we do it now?
Yeah, we can go ahead and do it now. We'll open up, we'll open up the public hearing on it, anyone wishing to come up and speak on this item, sign in with the secretary, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. Comments, questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I'll go ahead and move that we approve a revised drawing with a revision note that indicates what the revision included, switching the positions for the gas and water company. Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Take a second.
A motion to approve by Mike Bardwell, seconded by Scott Courtwright. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes.
Thank you.
See item 9B, strategic planning committee report.
I went, nothing went on regarding planning and zoning. I was there.
I didn't catch all, you said you went, nothing went on at all?
Regarding planning and zoning issues, I had a fireworks ordinance discussion, which they discussed not to have.
Item 10, new business. Any items of new business?
I have one, I have one item. Um, it's, I'd ask that the drainage, the. Um, it's, I'd ask that the drainage, the East Ascension Consolidated Gravity and Drainage District wants to just ask that we make a policy that the same stuff that sends to DPW and everybody else, make sure it's just part of our policy that's sent to them so they can look at the drainage for any of the subdivisions that come before this. I think they're sent already. They just said they'd like to make it, make sure that they're going to get it.
The drainage board wants us to get a copy of our packet?
Yeah, uh, yes. Well, they want to get, no, they want to get a copy of the information regarding drainage in the subdivisions. They want to be in the loop in the subdivisions. I think Michael's already talking to Bill and Margie, Michael?
I have not talked to Bill Ru about it, but as it stands right now, the only communication we have is when a pre-application meeting is submitted, we submit the drainage and traffic forms to get comments from DPW prior to the preliminary plat being filed. After that, we really don't go to DPW unless there are, and we do it on occasion, specific issues about maintenance or whatever, we'll confer with Bill Ru. But as a matter of practice, no, we're not submitting plans to them.
Where they would, instead of sending the check sheet or whatever to DPW, the drainage board is now going to handle all the drainage. So he asks that they be sent to the drainage board. They're going to be two separate, they're two separate entities now. All the roads go to a DPW, drainage go to the East Ascension Consolidated Gravity and Drainage District.
Well, there's, there's two forms we request. One is a flood form, which obviously would go to the drainage, and the other one is traffic, which I guess would go to DPW. So that's all he's talking about is those two specific requests.
That's all he's talking, the one foot flood goes to.
He just needs to tell his personnel, because I'm not sure Sean can tell you exactly who he's sending that to.
We have been doing it all, always, the preliminary plat, those two letters have been going to Bill Ru and CJ, who have been.
Yeah, that's fine.
It's still the same ones filling it out, it's maybe different.
They're just a different entity.
Right. Unless I'm missing the point in that they're wanting to be involved in review of plans or whatnot, but I don't.
No, no, they want to, no, they want to do is, they just want to make sure that the drainage board, because it's a separate entity, gets it.
Right. We can do that.
So there is no change in workflow?
No. It just goes to the drainage board rather than, the DPW will not be looking at the flood issues the drainage board will. And they have, it's a separate entity. Used to be the same person, it's not, it won't be any longer.
All right. Just so I'm clear right now. Michael, the worksheet that DPW has been filling out, is DPW going to continue filling that out or is the drainage board going to submit that information?
A little of both. DPW is going to fill out the traffic form. The traffic form. There's two forms.
There's traffic and drainage. Right now, we, and who's going to continue, who's going to submit the drainage information?
The drainage is going to be switched to the East Ascension Drainage Board. And that's the point that O'Neil is making is a formality, we need to submit that request to Bill Ru Ascension, East Ascension Drainage Board. So there will be two, two different entities that we send them to.
Okay. Well, we can discuss that.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a change of policy or procedure, it's just a matter of who we send them to.
Who it's going to, what entity it's going to.
Exactly.
Correct.
Okay. We can take care of that.
Okay.
Alan, you had an item for this?
I just had a quick announcement. DOTD did take bids on Highway 44 going from the interstate down to Highway 22. And assuming everything is straight with the paperwork, I hope to see that road under construction sometime this summer.
So we'll need to avoid that area for a little bit.
You need to avoid it now, it's the road so bad.
Okay. Okay, no other items of new business. We have no items of old business. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I have a motion by Julio.
I don't care, let's go.
I have a motion to adjourn by Julio Dumas, seconded by Paige Becknow. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. We'll be back. We'll meet again in 10 minutes for the zoning commission meeting.